It is 12:30 and I will call this special meeting of the Budget Audit Committee to order. Would you like to do a visual roll call and note that we are all here?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. All right, first, public comment on non-agenda items. If anyone here or online would like to make a comment, now is a good time.
Mayor Juan, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Perfect, I will close public comment. And before we get to action item, I will first welcome our new city manager, Mr. Brett Prabula. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Welcome.
And this will be exciting, so, welcome. And I will do this again tomorrow, so you're ready. All right, action items, number three. A presentation on the proposed update to master fee schedule. Our finance consultant, are you kicking us off today?
Yes.
All right.
Good afternoon, Mayor Juan and Councilmember Trupiyanu. Nitesh Sharma with the Finance Consultant with Gov Invest. So today, presenting to you the updated master fee schedule. Last few months, we've been working on the fee schedule as we have been in front of you a number of times to talk about the process. In last meeting, we talked about the composition of the labor rates and how we calculated that. And the direction from the council was to actually be here today to look at the, what does it mean to the fee schedules, right? So with me, I have the whole team here from Clayton, with each of the departments represented here. And I would like to thank each of the team members, but also want to thank our Finance Director, Angeline, to sit through many of the meetings and go through the very tough like process whereby we are going through line item by line item to understand how much time does it take for our team to provide the level of service to Clayton. So when we look at these fees, we focus on Clayton. What does it cost us? What does the time, does it take us to provide the service and what does it cost? Without looking at, just making sure that we do full cost recovery, but also making sure that we're not missing anything. So that's why we worked with each of the departments, because each department, they, or functional area, they know what the type of services they're provided, how long does it take. So it's a very comprehensive process. So I won't go through the, you know, each of the items, but what I will do today, if it's okay with council, is that go through each of the functional area of the fees and if you have questions on that, address those and then move to the next area. So this way, we are efficient and also we're not jumping back and forth from different sections, if that works for you.
Good.
Is it? Okay, good. Anything Finance Director you want to add? No? Good. So the first fees are planning and development fees. As you know, planning and development is a sort of a cost recovery area. The 100% of the cost should be paid by services provided to individuals or organizations receiving the benefits. These are usually economic development costs are subsidized usually by General Fund, but in this fee schedule, most of these things, these fees are listed here, are basically services that are provided to business, community, development, and other areas. So one of the things you'll see that we have in the current fees and proposed fees is that we put deposits. We actually went through each of the deposit line items. And the idea, the goal behind that, it was that as a small agency, we did not want to be a collection agency. When you leave the deposit small, then we, people use up the services very fast and then we are, then we have to go back and keep trying to collect on those. So we actually went through the fee schedule to make sure that the deposits are set at a level that is suitable and so we avoid staff time and other things. We also tried to also look into, instead of saying time, but we put actual cost. It's very important for us to know that when we're providing the services, it's actual, what is it cost, the labor rate, and then any overhead that's applied to it. So for example, I look at the first fee schedule, annexation. You'll see that before we used to charge time and then we said 5,000 minimum deposit. We changed that to actual cost, because it could be time and materials. So actual cost, $5,000. And then at the bottom, we actually described what some of the costs could be, like LAFCO costs, which is the local agency formation cost, legal costs plus 15% administrative fee, because when we process legal expenses, we manage, there's a cost associated with it. So engineering costs, this is a full recovery consultant cost, and then also any pre-annexation costs. There's a lot of discussion that happens in a LAFCO process that doesn't go anywhere. So we wanted to make sure that we capture all that cost. So I will pause over here and seek any input or direction or any feedback from council on this fee schedule, on this fee for community development.
Well, I don't have, thank you, Nitesh. I don't have a question on annexation in particular, but just in general. So when we're working with the public or developers or residents, we're providing them the, I just want to make sure I use the same terminology, the work, the book of fees, the work order billing, so that, and are we providing sort of estimates on what we think those actual costs could be for them, so they have a sense of?
Yeah, absolutely. So we, if we know it's going to take us two hours, we don't know what our recovery rate for, pay our costs is for the position, we'll be able to estimate saying that two hours of cost, just discussion cost, may cost us $280. So we do have that.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Juan.
You mentioned that the amounts of deposits were supposed to reflect, you know, our lack of resources to collection, but when I look at the document, that most of the deposits are flat across? So is that, was that intentional?
Yes, so we looked at each of the deposit. We worked with the director that's in charge of here, and we went back and said that is the deposit the right amount? You'll see some of their deposit may go down a little bit, but most of the deposits were set appropriately. But one of the things we did do in this process is we put actual costs. So now your deposit may be going down faster. When you say just time, then individuals applying for a permit will be only saying, okay, how much time? But they don't know that there's other costs associated with it. Actual cost could be a city attorney cost, could be a city engineer cost. So we know now that we are charging for those things, so.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay.
And the only other general question I had throughout the entire document, so the $5,000 deposit, is that, is that something that someone gives to us and then they work off the deposit until it runs out and then they're charged additional fees? So is that?
Absolutely. The idea is that we don't want a deposit to run out. So what happens is that we monitor that, we track the charges against those deposit when it, if the project is coming to an end. So we may be, okay, that's a management decision that, yeah, we think that this deposit amount is sufficient, but if the deposit amount is not sufficient, we have the ability to go back and seek more deposit.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
And it's important to note also that if you don't have this kind of, I do appreciate the somebody who did this here, but having a deposit works because a number of agencies, if they don't have a deposit, they actually have a hard time collecting, because who are you going to bill if they don't pay?
True. Thank you, Nitesh.
Thank you. The next fee category is the police services fee. Police services fee, we actually went back with, worked with the police chief over here, who's with us. And a couple of items to be noted, for example, we have a alarm fees, there were, I believe there was $52 we used to charge, false alarm, but the fee should have been $50, that's what we needed to charge. And then we had a couple of new fees at the very bottom, that's pay vehicle code sections, those were basically with the help of the police chief, these are the things that we can charge for, but it's, the fees are mostly set. In police department fees are usually established by regulatory agencies. So it's important to note that one, another item that we want to highlight to you is the RV, RV public parking permit fee, Clayton resident. We did originally calculate a fee for that, but there was a council policy decision that police chief shared with us that the Clayton residents were given, you know, they were not charged for that. So I do want to make sure that council's good with that policy, the committee is good with that policy decision and alternative of any questions on police department fees.
I don't have any on police department, but, and maybe I misunderstood, I thought we were going to kind of go page by page, so I.
Oh, sorry about that.
Yeah, so like I have some questions under environmental review and permits and miscellaneous and.
Okay.
Can we go back?
Yeah, we can go back.
Just for a second?
Absolutely. So we can go to page two.
Correct.
If there's any questions you may have on page two of the attachment two.
So here are my questions on page two, the environmental review. So all of the new items, and I know that we see these several times throughout the document, the county recorder fee, staff time, mileage costs. So were we not charging those before? Is that why they're not in the current column?
It was basically, if you look at the new on page two, it says county filing fee plus time. It was, it was, it was not clearly stated. For transparency and accountability, we wanted to ensure that when we have any document to record with the county, the county has its own fee established, plus any staff time that it takes to go back and forth, and the IRS mileage rate. So it was probably charged, but it wasn't clearly articulated, illustrated what the charges were.
So it wasn't itemized?
Exactly.
Okay, okay. And I, that covers several sections. Did you have anything else in environmental review? Okay. My next question was under permits, kind of going into the next page. And the tree, the permitting for tree removal really jumped. Is there something in particular that caused that huge bump? That was page three.
So tree removal permit fee was based on the staff time and, and staff time it takes to provide the level of services, that 1.5 of the position that supports that.
So maybe we were under.
We were under, yes.
Okay. And you know what? I don't want to completely backtrack. We can save this for the end, but one of the things I did want to ask you at the top was, you know, kind of what your overall impressions were. Was there anything that surprised you the most? Kind of key takeaway, so maybe we can save that for the end, because I know this was a multi-month-long process.
Sounds good.
So for the tree removal, did I, am I reading it right? Like it went from, this is on attachment two, page.
Page three.
Internal page three, where it says, it went from 43 to 45?
Yeah, but then you've got.
The non-compliance penalty.
Forty-three to 135.
I think that was just the penalty component, right? So people do a tree removal without.
The penalties.
Yeah.
I'm just saying in that whole section, and the same with the non-compliance, 143 to 259. Was there anything, I was just curious.
When somebody is non-compliant, it takes time to go there, it takes, it's a larger effort.
So staff time, that's what I heard you say, okay.
Okay.
Okay. Page four, are you okay with page four, or we should be moved to?
I had a couple of things under miscellaneous.
Okay, miscellaneous, uh-huh.
So on the new, again, the new, I had the pre.
Application.
The pre-application review of development and community facility district. So again, because there wasn't anything in the current column, were we not charging?
It, so these are looking at the, we're probably charging under the deposits, under the, you know, like if somebody comes in. But really, we wanted to highlight that if you're doing a development project, there's a pre-application review. So basically, what happens is that somebody comes to the counter, I want to buy this property and I want to know about zoning and all that. So this, we are basically trying to make sure that we are full cost recovery, so we have the ability to say that two hours of work is, you know, 100 and 272 minimum actual cost, and we take a deposit. And a lot of times, in many agencies, we've seen is that these are the costs that are called lickages. And basically, people come in and they do a lot of those discussions, they're gone, and we have no ability to collect.
And what are they called, did you say, Nitesh?
Lickages, leakage.
Lickages.
Yes. And community facilities district or assessment district, it requires engineer to, you know, like a finance consultant. And these normally, a best practice is to ensure that you collect a deposit and start working towards the CFD formation and other things that will go with the development application.
Okay. Thank you for that, that's very informative. And I do think, right, we're trying to be as transparent as possible and so that we're itemizing it. And then under the engineering section, and I don't know if this is a question for you or for engineer Larry, but will the GIS software that I know we're talking about potentially purchasing this year, will this offset any of these costs?
So one of the things that will happen when you purchase a GIS software, the city will need to establish a fee for the, for technology impact fee.
Okay.
And that is very common to charge for software. We actually did calculate that and our finance, we did actually do review that, and we actually had a line item before in here. So that was 8% fee charged to application permit, it was related to, it's called technology impact fee. We, in the city, we actually left that, we did not charge for that. So, but we do have to meet those MAP requirements and everything else. So that is definitely something that Budget Audit Committee can suggest and we can bring it forward, but that's easy, we already had a line item for that, we just removed it, paid, paid direction of the city.
And if I could add some information, that's very common in many, many cities with the use of technology really taking over a lot of what community development does. It's common to see that percentage link to these permit fees for technology in order to recoup, basically enhancing and keeping the software up to date moving forward. Many times, cities will initially buy it and then 10 years go by and essentially haven't kept up and now don't have the resources to do it. So that is a very common fee to add.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. And should I keep going? Yeah, okay. And again, just want to make sure I'm doing my due diligence here. On page seven, we're talking about the cash bond, cash bond major encroachments. And I'm just looking for my place here on page seven. And I think it's under, is it the bottom? Is that something, again, is that brand new? Oh wait, I'm sorry, I think there's nothing in that proposed for the new schedule.
It should have been the same per city engineer, so.
What should it be?
City engineer, there's no change in that, that's been.
Oh, okay, per city engineer, okay. That's why I just wanted to make sure, because I'm like, I'm sure we're not, not doing that.
And that sometimes is like, it's not even a fee, it's really a management decision, so it just, it was highlighted, so.
Okay, and then last one for this section, just page nine. I had a question on, sorry, let me just scroll back up. For all of the new stuff in, the new items in special service fees and maintenance, so what triggered those? Was that something we realized maybe other municipalities were charging that we weren't?
This was not clearly included in your fee schedule, so we basically looked at your fee schedule, and these are the type of services we normally provide, inspection services, reinspection services. And it was very vague, it was part of the deposit, but we're really highlighting that. And then also, one of the items in here is the contract services. Clayton has a lot of consultant contracts, and before, it was a fixed rate that was charged. And we're missing on that consultant hourly rate, which varies by the type of consultant you hire. So really, paid the city manager's direction, we wanted to make sure that we very clearly articulate that, you know, if there is, if we have to, if there is any work that's being done by consultants, that is full cost recovery, because that's 100% pass-through plus administrative cost. We also looked at the public work services fee, that was not there, and a couple of things that we.
Pause you for a second. So did you say that in the past when we did contract services and we had to engage a third party to do some body of work, we charged, we, the city paid the third party actual rate?
$200, let's say.
Whatever happened to be, but we paid the applicant, whoever was applying or, you know, utilizing it, a fixed rate?
Fixed rate in some cases, yes. So we really were, and it's, some of this was captured in the deposit, but it's not very clearly articulated, right? So this actually allows you to make sure that if we are using a third party, we can very clearly say that our fee schedule says that we're going to charge for that regardless of any, because there's, people can come up with any types of question that's not covered in these fees, that each line, like permit fees or plan, they can ask you anything. So in this scenario, when they come and sometimes developers will come on a project, they will, you know, just scoping it out. So we really have the ability that if we use any third party to capture their cost. And that's what the idea was.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then, are we going to go into facilities and park rental next?
Yes, we're done with police department fees, so.
Before we move on, can I get some clarity on, just some general direction from the committee on the technology fee? Is that something you'd like us to pursue and put in, or do you feel like that's not what direction you'd like to go?
I think I'm on the fence on that one. If, if it's incidental in nature, then I would say it's probably not worth the effort. But if it's going to be something that we'll need to build up over time so that we could eventually replace or, you know, service the thing, then it is something that we should include. So I would, you know, if there's a recommendation that we should pursue that because it will make us whole over time, then that would, I would include it.
That would be my recommendation to allow the community development department to also be nimble as technology changes over the next five to 10 years. They'll have a pot of money that you're collecting based on the usage to at least assist in adapting and making the city, I think, more user-friendly with technology as they kind of continue to pursue that avenue, would be my recommendation.
Well, and if I remember correctly, in Director Ayer's original request, it was a one-time fee for the software and then an annual, wasn't it? An annual.
Maintenance.
Maintenance.
Correct. And that could help with that as well, correct?
Yep, yep, yep. Okay, thank you.
That sounds, that sounds reasonable.
Reasonable.
All right, we will go ahead and include that. So it was already calculated out, it was already part of the fee schedule, so it's just a matter of adding that. So moving on to facility and rental fees, these, this is an area we spend a lot of time on. And we went back and forth with our team over here and also our maintenance chief over here, and made sure that we, the hours it takes us to really make, you know, have the facility ready for rental, right? And making sure that, that we can capture those costs. And one of the things I will say, sometimes we learn in this process that not everybody leaves their rental place to the level that they receive it, right? They're supposed to clean it up. And so we try to make sure that, that we, during this fees for parks and rec in total, we had some ability for that. So you'll see something like extra trash pickup, for example, in some scenarios. That was because we wanted to make sure we captured those. So looking at the, I will say, the endeavor hall fees, for example, city council set a policy on that, on the fees. So the new fees we calculated and the percentage fees for nonprofits were basically based on the policy set forward by council. All the other fees are, looking at, for example, library fees, resident pay our costs is $89, but you'll see nonprofit Clayton and nonprofit non-Clayton, we basically applied the same ratio that the previous policy direction was into the new, new proposed fee. However, however, this committee has the ability to keep the fee as, at $89 if they want, because that's the full, you know, just like resident fee, or continue with the policy as set forward. So I do want to make sure that we fully disclose that to you, that we applied the same sort of philosophy and paid direction with the city manager as we talked about.
The one comment that I had is, in our last meeting on this subject, we did eliminate the gross annual revenue over $150,000. So remember, we modified it to two tiers, so we don't need that third tier in there unless we.
Is it just, yeah, it was, it was only, yeah, it was only two tiers that we went to, right? So it was.
Right, so I don't think we want to.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we want to eliminate that here.
I think that was the only applicable to the endeavor hall. So this is the, the library and the other hall halls did not affect it by that one.
Right, I'm on the endeavor hall, page one, yeah, where it has gross annual revenue, this is for the nonprofit section, yeah.
Yeah, agreed at $150,000, what you're saying that we should eliminate that line.
So I think we collapsed those two, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And for, and again, I think the courtyard, well, I guess we can take that up if we, there's a tier there.
Same, same.
Right? And one of the things I was going to ask you on the picnic area, I know there, if we're there yet, are we there yet? Do you have anything else?
No, that's the new, that's the, yeah, we can, that's attachment five. We are looking at attachment four. Do you have?
Do you have anything on four?
I'm, I'm going by pages, right? So we're on page one here, attachment four.
Yeah, page one, attachment four. Do you have any questions on that one?
No, I think, I think this one's fine.
Page two of attachment four?
I don't have a lot of any questions.
All right.
Attachment five here.
Attachment five, all right. So attachment five. So when we had a discussion, if you'll see the fee schedule for picnic area two, three, and four, we actually looked at, we had, pay our discussion, we discovered that it takes the same amount of time for each of the picnic areas. But you'll see the fee was, current fee is set relatively very low, $22. The minute the truck leaves the yard to go there, it's cost us $22. So cleaning up after four hours with the maintenance worker, we actually, we went back and worked with our team over here, and we discovered that the true cost of that for resident for four-hour block is $134 for, and then we basically for, applied the same for methodology as it was for non-resident commercial, what the fee increase should be, more than because they don't pay property taxes. So we applied the same policy, for example, that's why you'll see 189. And then we also added two new line items, if you see deposits. And the reason being, as I understand from our maintenance chief, is that some of these picnic areas, they are left in a very bad condition, and we spent additional time. So we have the ability to really go back and capture those costs or even extra trash pickup or any other maintenance that we have to do.
Go ahead.
I would, I would say generally, it's, I think it would be helpful to be very clear on the, on the specific picnic areas that we're talking about. I think some of the labeling is inconsistent, like at the top, we have, in the yellowish bar, it says picnic area, but it lists underneath the picnic area two, three, four, five, but then in another yellow bar, it has picnic area number five. So it's a little bit unclear onto which it's indicating, so I think if we can add something that.
Absolutely.
Indicates what specific areas we're talking about, I think that'd be helpful.
Absolutely, and that's how the fee was sort of established, but the bottom is for five and six combined, I think that's where it should have been like more clearly articulated. You'll see, so we'll definitely do that.
I was even thinking a map might be helpful.
A map would be helpful as well.
That would have been helpful for me to understand it more clearly, too. And so I just want to go back to what you said a few moments ago, Nitesh. So the $22 was for a four-hour block?
Yes.
Oh, so that was very low, because.
I think that was based on the per hour for the minimum of four-hour blocks. So if they were rented for the four hours, 22 times four.
So is the current?
Oh, 22 times four?
Yes.
Not for four hours, but the 134 now is a flat fee for four hours?
Or is that per hour?
No, 134 is paid. Let me just double check this.
It says flat fee for four hours.
If somebody rents for four hours, as Anderson from Jim, I think that's what it costs us.
134 versus, so 22 into four is what, 88?
88.
Yeah. So one was an hourly, the other is a flat.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that might be worth indicating that.
Sure.
Because I thought, wow, we went from 22 to 134, and I can understand that maybe some things were underestimated, but that clarification.
A little closer when you go from 88 to 134.
Yeah, 88 to 134.
Oh, I apologize, no. It was four-hour blocks for $22.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Yes, I, yeah, that was my misunderstanding.
Yes.
So we're charging four hours only for the $22 for the four-hour blocks.
Because we have a four-hour minimum.
Yes.
So it is apples to apples.
It was a 22, that's what I was going to say, but I didn't want to.
Yes, I apologize.
Either way, $5 and 25 cents per hour is a pretty good rate.
Yeah.
And then a map.
I mean, it just, absolutely.
And I'm assuming, just for clarification, without a map, are we talking about the picnic tables that run along the creek, sort of below the corral and plaza? Is that, or Jim, are they the picnic tables that are in the grove, or? I know we have picnic tables. I know we have picnic tables in a multitude of places. So is it the, the ones that are down by the creek, below the plaza, as well as the grove, as well as the community park, as well as? Okay. Well, that's what I wasn't sure, because then I, one of my other questions was enforcement, because people just, you know, use those tables. So yeah, maybe a map would help. And then we can
Sure, absolutely.
determine how we enforce that, where I don't know if anybody in our staff is going around saying, do you have a permit for that picnic area or not?
Yeah.
Right?
I, I would also, okay, so separately from that, I'm just gonna pepper you with things. The, we are drawing a distinction between alcohol use or alcohol consumption
Yes.
prepared wine versus
Hard liquor.
Versus distilled spirits.
Distilled spirits, yeah.
I think we were calling it. I, I would suggest that we just don't do that
Okay.
and just have one thing so that it, enforcement is always a key, and if you're gonna, you're not gonna do that. I mean, I think it's a yes or no.
Okay.
And, you know, you can just, and really, this is a, a deposit.
Yeah.
So I would just make it the higher amount.
Okay.
Or something in between or something, and just make it easier for everyone.
Perfect.
I don't know if you
I would recommend using the higher amount. That would be the simplest path.
Yeah.
A higher amount.
Yeah, and being just general that any alcohol, that's the deposit.
Yeah.
And, and how do we enforce, because that was one of my questions while we're on the topic, how do we enforce that?
Can you even have alcohol in the park, in a public place?
Here, why you have a permit, but we don't allow hard liquor in the park. And that's on the, the request that they kind of allow to city hall.
Okay. So with the permit, we, we allow it.
Yeah.
But we'll, we will never allow, like, hard liquor?
Only at endeavor.
Oh, endeavor, okay. So maybe if we clarify that and then strike the language that's superfluous.
Absolutely. And, and the reason for that new fee was just to make sure that if somebody, you know, there's people leave that picnic area in a bad condition, we have the ability to
Yeah. No, the deposit is great.
Yeah.
Just the, the clarity is, would be useful.
Sounds good. All right. Moving on to page two of this document. Any questions on page two of this?
Is that adult and youth? Let me just go back to my page two.
It's internal page 2431.
Oh, what, that's the other thing I was wondering, in that adult and youth field section, can we indicate, I don't know how many different fields there are, maybe a map as well, if that's possible?
We'll work with the city team to see if there's a map we can include on that. Will be very helpful to illustration purposes, what we're referring to.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
And we'll make sure the deposit amounts in these sections are all collapsed as well to as one.
Okay.
Pay direction from the previous. Page three, we did look at this as well. We left the deposits the, the same in here, so, and then we'll just combine the, the Grove Park, the deposit amounts. But any, any questions on page three? Okay. I'm still on attachment five, going to page four.
Well, actually, on, back on page three, again, similar to the, the alcohol distinction, we have a separate pricing for with food and without food. Are people gonna rent the park and never, and not have food? I mean, I feel like that, we should, we would just kind of normalize it and assume it's with food and go with the higher amount.
Absolutely.
That makes sense.
That makes, yeah, absolutely. And that was on page three, I think, that come, that note was
Those are deposits, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, I'm on page four of the attachment five. Any questions from the committee on that?
I don't have anything on four or five.
Okay. Thank you.
Some of these rates look like they went down. It's odd, because I would say, like, when we look at the gazebo section
Yes.
Renting the gazebo for a resident Oh, is that per?
Pay day and pay hour.
Yeah, it looks like the per hour rate went up and the per day rate went down.
Yes, and we actually did have this discussion. So when you rent a gazebo for eight hours, let's just say, you're not gonna have maintenance for eight hours, you're gonna have probably six hours. So we did, we did account that. Previously, it was basically pay hour, eight hours, and you take the eight hours. So we, it, it's getting a discount for bulk, a number of hours, I guess.
Okay, cool.
Moving on to page five and six of attachment five. If there's any questions, if not, then we have the best for the last.
I just have two questions under other special services at the bottom of page six.
Yes.
So the trash disposal fee, I'm assuming we weren't charging that before?
No, and it varies by event, and it's just, we, as an agency, we, there's some, like I said, some, some of the rentals, they leave a lot of trash, and they don't pick up, and they just leave everywhere. So we wanted to make sure that we, we don't penalize good people, but making sure that if somebody does not follow, we, we have the ability to ensure staff cost. And then facility attendant fees, this is something that also, we, and some, I believe one of the halls that we have attendant, like, if we have any attendants in the weekend, we wanted to make sure that it's time and half, that cost is also covered. So we wanted to clearly identify that if there is a facility attendant needed, that cost can be the pass-through, you know, if we have a contractor, we can pass through the cost or our city staff cost.
Okay. And have, I, you may not know this, Natish, but have we filled that position yet for that part-time facilities attendant? So, calling all moms and dads out there. This is an open position, right, for, what is the rate per hour?
Well, the current rate's 1550 per hour, and it does not have regular hours. It's off-hours, evenings and weekends.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, and then, it's okay to move on to the special event fees, and we spent a lot of time on this one. We actually talked about different opportunities or looked at different agencies. And this fee, what we are looked at, it's sort of, when I'm talking about the, the street closure fees, for example, it's, it's, I want, definitely want to say this is more like a market rate. It does not have the, the, the policy behind it, is that if you want to have a different fee for nonprofit or any other groups, but this is more like what is a market rate. We looked at neighboring agencies. City Walnut Creek has sort of events like that, that they are pretty similar to what we do. We have a couple of big events over here as well, and we wanted to make sure there's not a really, we wanted to make sure that we do full cost recovery, like staff time and, and other things that, that costs us materials and stuff. But we also wanted to make sure that there is also the opportunity cost when you have a street closure, it becomes basically a park. So when we looked at this, at the moment, if you see our current fees for, for the street closure fee is $144. And that's the, that also, it's not highlighted in here, is the staff time that we do collect for those. So I do wanted to make sure that, that it's, even though it's not listed, but we do charge for those. But agencies we looked at in this area do it different ways in these fees. Some agencies are, rely on TOT, which is the transient occupancy taxes, sales taxes. So they like to have large events, and they keep this fee sort of relatively low because they want people to come stay in their town and spend money over there. And what, when you don't have that kind of base over here, just like Clayton does, we have to sort of have something that is illustrated in here. What is it, the, the fee that people come from outside residents here? They probably won't stay here, but they stay in, in other agents, in other cities. But how can we make sure that our cost and our, we are getting some benefit out of that? So we did run this by our, our legal team as well, just to, we did have this conversation. And this is a policy issue that we're bringing to the, to this committee, is the, the fees. So let me just walk through. We wanted to highlight the fees into two categories. One is small block parties like cul-de-sac. And what does it cost us to, you know, the application fees for $42, and then the small event permit fees, $250. That's the time it takes for us to review the permit to make sure that it doesn't have any, it meets all the requirements. So 250 for that. And then the, the other event fees is the street closure or parking lot open fees. The idea behind this was more like attendant base, because it's very hard to know, you know, like, if you do pay a square foot base, it's only catch a small portion of the cost, but really looking at pay attendant base. And these fees are broken down into different categories. The application fee's set $42. And we also wanted to make sure that city staff reimbursement fees, based on anything that, you know, the city does, time and materials, those are actual costs that is captured. And then minimum deposit required to ensure that, you know, we can, we are collecting, charging against a deposit. Then we broke into fees into different participant of, different levels of participants. 100 to 499, it's very rare, I would say, a city I would see is that closing the whole street for 499 participants, but that's a policy issue. But some agencies do close events, streets for our, for larger, for larger participants. So we basically looked at the, the participants and looked at other agencies, what they do, and sort of come up with a market rate. And in front of you, we wanted to present to you that anything over 5,000 plus participants, it's a cap of $10,000 paid day. So the event runs for three days, it's $30,000. It really, it's, it balances out. The, the fees, it's not like, if it's $10,000, it's not pay attendee, so it's gonna, you know, it's more like saying that if 5,000 or more, this is the impact it creates, and this is the fee for that. So I want to pause and, and, and turn it over to this committee for any feedback or direction or any policy guidance that you want to give.
There, I, I will not name the street, but there's a street in town that historically has a Halloween party that they close about five or six different streets in town. Maybe, and I know that our police have been aware, they, they kind of make sure everything is, is going well. With that, I, I don't know, how, how is, how is someone to estimate what they, what their event would fall under?
So when you fill out an especial event, and this is what we see in other agencies as well, you have to fill out the number of participants and estimate participants. And the reason you do that, for public safety purposes.
So it's the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, that's, yeah. Okay.
So I, I had a couple of questions around this section. So the 359 that we've been charging for the special event permit application is now, even for larger events, going to be reduced to 42? Am I understanding that correctly?
42 plus.
Oh, 42, where do you see plus?
42 plus city staff reimbursement fees.
Oh, okay.
It's $1,000 minimum deposit.
Okay. So it'll come out of that deposit, okay, because I wasn't sure why we were lowering that. And then, kind of similar to Mayor Wong's question is, so does this apply to all streets and our city limits? And have we charged for street closures before?
We haven't done it here, but it's, it's, it's a common to, when you close a street, it becomes like a park.
Yes.
And, and your street becomes your park and provides the, the, the access or the, the place for, for organizations or cities to hold events. So really, this is something that was missing here. You probably had a lot of events, we did notice that we were providing a lot of resources and, and there's no economic benefit coming out of that, so.
So the other part of that, my question is, so I'm having an event, let's say, for 5,000 people, I'm paying 10,000 a day, is there a list of things I'm getting for that? Is that barriers? I mean, you know, are they, are there barricades? Are there, it's just
Your fee.
The fee
Yeah.
For closing the street. So then, if I need barricades, police Okay, just want to make sure.
And I just wanted to maybe also make it very, you know, transparent that council or this committee will need to set some policies about street closure. We don't have, so you don't want to be in a city that, anybody can close street anywhere. So you, you want to set a good policy. This is more geared towards the downtown area where events do happen. I do want to fully disclose that. But if there's a small cul-de-sac, yes, but if there is a Halloween event and they closed five or six streets, that should be more of a policy and, and should follow the process.
Just want to add one thing on that one. Currently, if I remember, the community development could, director can be clarified, but I think she has been charging the street closure of the flat fee of $144 through this point. So I think that has been our, the policy and guidelines. So we've just been charging $144 for any of the street closures.
Which doesn't have any cost.
Community develop, development director
Is that correct, Dr.?
Can clarify on that one, yes.
Director Ayers?
Generally speaking, yes, but the, for CBCA events, that has not been charged. That's been part of the fees that were waived under the agreement, which the council has terminated as of July 1st. So, but for non-CBCA events, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. How do we, when we say street, how are we defining a street? Is it, is it, is it like a city block, or, I mean?
I, I think that's where we have to come back with a, we'll call it a street closure policy, where I can work with the police chief and community development director and the rest of the team and bring forward something that I think articulates the definition, when it's allowed, or the blackout dates, or, you know, we, we can go through the policy side of that, I think is the next step.
Okay. And because these are, I mean, just in general, like, because these is essentially using the city resources, I mean, you wouldn't want exactly a policy that, you wouldn't want the streets closed every day. And so I believe that, that you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I believe that the city has discretion in granting
Yeah.
the, the closure permit, I guess I would call it. Is that accurate?
Absolutely. So in my, in my city I live in, there's a lot of marathon runs across from Sacramento to West Sacramento through Yellow Bridge, you know, Tower Bridge.
The Cosway?
What was that?
Over the Cosway?
Uh, over the, the, the golden, the, the Tower Bridge was the gold bridge that connects West Sacramento.
Gold bridge, okay.
And, but these, the city actually has the ability to, in the city set in the policy saying that we at any moment can cancel the permit because of safety reasons, because, you know, they put together all the reasons for that. So, and some others also, I wanted to make sure that another policy is needed in this is to waive fees. Who, who can waive fees? And at what level of the fees can be waived as well, too? So that's something that's missing, that's a good policy to have for, for the, for the city.
So the other question, I have just a few more, and one is, is there any city property that is not identified in this master fee schedule? And I am thinking specifically about the property to the left of the Clayton Community Church, which is often part of our event.
Well, there's two, there's two properties, I think two parcels, right? To the west of the Clayton Community Church building, there's a parking lot, a paved lot, and then kind of both to the west and north of that, there's a, like a dirt lot. And those are the two APNs. So that was just to clarify.
Okay, yeah. So is that part of street closure, or?
Absolutely, yeah.
It's part of the street closure.
It's basically saying that you're gonna have this many events, this many participants, and that's when the policy we, we'd come in, is that when do you, the policy in those parking lots, is what, what includes in the street closure and not. So the, if this committee decides that that's not part of the street closure, you want to have a fee for that, or somebody uses your parking lot, which normally, in agencies, they don't do, they usually treat it as part of the, the event.
Okay. And then, just when we're talking about street closure policy, that could apply also to like fund, marathon fundraisers and, because there could be some street closure in that.
Yeah, in Napa County, when I was there, we had a lot of marathons, and we had a policy specifically around how many could happen per month, when could they happen, what areas, specifically to ensure that the traffic issues wouldn't arise from so many being back-to-back-to-back-to-back. So again, I think the policy should be as comprehensive as we can make it without being so rigid. So again, I think the policy should be as comprehensive as we can make it without being so rigid that it, you know, is just cumbersome and unrealistic. And so that's what we'll have to work on in the time to come.
And then I kind of go back to my original question, which I'm, maybe it's a good time to ask now, was there, what your overall impressions were working on this? And anything that surprised you and any key takeaways that we should be cognizant of?
I will say this is, this study was very important for the city and the policies that you're setting forth to ensure that the, the city is, the city costs are fully recovered. A lot of agencies, this is an area that's very tough for them and they set the fees artificially very low. And, and, and in some cases that a lot of general taxes are used to subsidize these fees. Where Clayton is, you don't have a lot of industry, you don't have, you know, you're mostly residential and these benefits are directly provided to your residents. So you're creating an opportunity for ensure that the fees are set adequately and capturing a lot. And I will say that one of the things I will include in the, in, in this fee schedule is an annual escalator, which is the San Francisco Bay Area, April to April escalator, that is part of our current fees. So you don't have to wait to do a major update to the fees. You can really kind of add upon this. And this will be something that can be done in-house, because we actually will give the whole, actually workbook to the city to be able to update these fees in-house relatively quick and, and not be cost effective way too.
And that was one of my last questions, or probably second to last, is when was the last time that we went through this process? Has it been, or have we gone to it to this degree before?
We, as I understand, we did go through this process, but we did not really list out, oh, what is it, what does it cost us? Like twenty-two dollars for the picnic area? We know that it costs more than that. For four hour block, twenty-two dollars, it's just, it's not realistic. So especially with the inflation and everything else. So I will say that I think it's making sure that the right stakeholders are involved. And I feel bad for Jim, because he was on the phone for many, many hours and helping with this and many of the other department heads, just to make sure that we are capturing the right, the right fees for us.
Okay. And last question for Director Ayers on this is that software that we were kind of talking about, maybe it was with our finance director, Angeline. It's kind of like event planning software or permit software, and maybe it's a multitude of different types. We can then front load these rates in, correct? And it would be a lot more efficient than the way we're doing it now correctly.
Absolutely. I think some of those, the software, I think community development director has the permit, the, the management software and as well as some of those. Although the business license is not part of the, our master fee schedules, the, there's some of those, the technologies that we have not been able to keep up with and those fees are, has not been reflected in the, our part of the, the operating costs and overheads on that one. So I think that would be important for moving forward purposes, for anytime we acquire a new software, that should, cost should be definitely, should be included in there for the replacement down the road as well.
Okay, so efficiency, time saving.
Correct, yes.
So, yes, absolutely, definitely. And then the last fees category is administrative fees, which definitely wanna highlight some policy issues in here for your council as well. For example, the credit card convenience fee, this is not being charged. And this is, if somebody's using a credit card as a convenient, it's very common for agencies to charge for that fee and we are proposing that. We're not making any money, but more like cost recovery, those fees.
Currently, city's been absorbing all those convenience fees, yes. We've been paying, the city's been paying for all those, yes.
And we also wanted to make sure that we highlight a couple of ways that we, we did the document fee, but we actually kind of identified in different sizes and what does it cost. And then some of the fees are fixed pay, FPPC, which is the fair, you know, the paid dot. But the couple of things like return check fee, it used to be the first check was thirty-five, second check was twenty-eight. It costs us the same amount of money. So it should be charging what does it cost? And it's, and it really should be charged for the staff time that it takes for a return check, because it, now we have to call the bank and we have to follow up with payments. So we are trying to make sure that we, we recover those costs as well.
If we deposit a check that bounces, doesn't the bank charge us money?
Yes.
Isn't what they charge us, the thirty-five dollars?
Thirty-five, but we, our fee was twenty, it was before was twenty-five dollars for a return check.
So, I, sorry, I'm not on that page, but is it thirty-five plus actual?
No, it's thirty-five dollars.
Because it's gonna be, we're gonna pay more than thirty-five for a bounced check.
So it's our staff time on top of that.
I mean, my question, is that indicated here or?
Yeah, it's indicated in here.
Okay.
And it says administrative fee staff charged, so we actually added another twenty, twenty-eight dollar fee on the twenty, thirty-five to make sure that we have our administrative assistant or technician be able to follow up and get a payment. That's page one of attachment seven. And then subsequent return check fee, we had thirty-seven and we said it should be the same fee regardless of first check bouncing or second check bouncing, what does it cost us?
Okay. You had indicated a moment ago that there is a mechanism to increase via CPI.
Yes.
Did I miss that somewhere? Where's that?
It's not in here, but there was a policy decision that we were gonna seek from a guidance. But there was something that I was going to propose is that annual escalator of CPI. That's currently in your, in your fees already, so just.
Yeah, we typically do that each year, so my question is more around, does this, is what we're looking at now, does it include that automatically? Or are we still gonna do that each year? Or, so I'm not sure how that actually operationalizes.
So when this fee item is approved, one of your, one of your approval will be that these fees will automatically date each year with the CPI.
Okay. And then I know some of here, like generally, most of the increases here on some of the internal items are in line with CPI, but I think they're, they're fairly close as it is, so.
Yeah, four point two percent. That's April to April.
Okay. Yeah, I calculate some at four, some at six, so it's, it's right around, right around there.
You're absolutely right.
Some are more like the twenty-two dollars, but.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor Wong, Councilmember Trupiano, and I really wanna thank the staff team again. Without them, this, none of this work is possible.
Well, and we thank you, because we know this was a lot of work and we appreciate the attention to detail and making sure, even though it might not have been on time, it was correct.
I think.
And so it was worth the wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a question for staff in general. When is this gonna come back? Because this has to come back to the council, full council for adoption, I understand. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's correct. We have to come back to the full council for adoption. I have to look at our rules and see the.
Because, yeah, it's like a.
It's a first reading, second reading, yeah, exactly. And so do we have a date set yet or not?
We do. What, we just discussed, one of the things we are gonna do is do a, if talking, we'll have a discussion with the city manager to see if we should do a workshop with the council, like a special meeting, to go over this fees with the council as part of the, maybe a budget workshop, just, just strictly on fees and budget. And then publish a public hearing and have the same day the fees be adopted, so.
And that's, that's somewhat common, is to do a study session first, gets, airs everything out, and then you come back with kind of the cleanest document at the very end to be able to approve. That's, that's a common practice too.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I would suggest that we can do that as part of one of our upcoming meetings whenever we're ready.
Yeah, let me, let me look and see if staff's kind of workload relative to the budget adoption and where we can either add it as a secondary item, try not to keep here until midnight and, and/or if we can fit it in between, so, yeah.
And then we have another budget and audit meeting a week from today, so there could be some public comment out there.
Will this incorporate, with the budget, with the meeting that we have on Monday, a week from today, I think it will incorporate some of the feedback that we had from prior. Will it also incorporate the impact of this as well?
Yes. This, our direction was that originally when we did this fee schedule was the budget was gonna include the direction that, so, as, but it's gonna be a line item. It's gonna show that this is the new fees, so we really can say, illustrate to you that this is your, your base budget and this is based on if this document gets approved.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
And then what were the other items for the budget and audit committee meeting next week?
Next week is the whole budget.
It's the whole budget, okay. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Any other, are we, all right, well, I think, thank you for that, for your time. And thank you, everyone from the city staff that came to, to, to join us. That concludes item three A and we are adjourned at one thirty.
Mayor Wong, did you wanna call public comment?
All right, I rescind that. I, public comment.
And Mayor Wong, I do not have any hands raised on this item, but I wanted to make sure you.
Perfect, I just, you know, that's good. So no public comment, we move to adjournment, still one thirty. Thank you.